6:31. So I really wanted to fit in a meeting because I was, at the time I scheduled this, Vernon was going to go before the Board of Education on the 3rd and this was our last opportunity to do this, but I have my beloved nephew moving to Boulder, Colorado for dinner tonight and so I have left a Tuscan pork roast and garlic smashed potatoes.
Oh, I'm coming!
And a maple pie to be here with you this evening. So I'm really trying to get out of here in an hour as I, and Jody has been nagging me about this, I mean gently reminding me that it would be better to spend more time, but I want to try to be really efficient with our time and try to get this done. But now also Vernon is not meeting with the Secretary on the 3rd, well if there is a Secretary on April 3rd. Vernon is going to join Dummerston on the night. So we have, we can schedule a meeting next week.
Yeah, of course.
So we can schedule a meeting next week to finish this up if there's any lingering questions, thoughts, problems, otherwise. So, sounds good?
Sounds great.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of, oh my gosh, Jody, what was the date of that?
I don't even have them.
Ah, so maybe we're gonna have to skip that tonight.
I don't think I have them.
I really went flying out of the house. Do you have it so you're the most organized of us?
No, I don't have them.
Did you send them to us?
Yes, they got sent out, but it was like three weeks ago.
Oh boy.
It's probably buried in my knee.
Yeah.
It's on the website.
There you go.
Yes, good job.
If you, I'll look for it, what do you want?
Sounds good. Several of us went to a presentation and maybe David Scholes could say a little bit about this? Are you ready to know?
We have enough time.
Yeah, we have enough time. Okay. About AGS presentations from people that have met with the Secretary and there were two attorneys that were extremely helpful going over the legalities of Act 46, so.
And the AGS.
And the AGS. And there are some minutes from that meeting that we should probably link to, like some notes from that meeting that came out, we should probably link.
Oh, press release.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I could do that.
She has minutes, there are notes that she took too.
Do you want me to do that along with the minutes or?
That would be great.
Okay. But Kim volunteered though, too, right?
I was saying January 30th.
But that's the last meeting, really?
You counted?
Yeah.
Okay, approved, yes, it's been awhile. So.
I have February 15th.
Then I must have had the 15th.
Yes, yes, it was, because I remember Valentine's themed, yes, it was Valentine's themed food.
Okay.
I had a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th.
So.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so David made the motion.
First off.
Sue, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Nays or abstentions?
I understand.
She was not, Anne is not with us, so she's abstaining. The ayes have it. So Jody's gonna link the article from the AGS presentation to the, to the minutes so that people can access that if they want. Dick is not here, our transparency committee is not here, he's still recovering with.
Of course, only two weeks out, so.
Okay, he's got a bad knee. So I will, if that, if it's okay with everybody, I will just email Dick and see if he's up for writing a little article talking about what's going on with presenting and sort of updating the public. Does that, and does that sound like a good idea? And I think we're gonna meet next week so we can review the article next week if that's acceptable. Excellent. Moving on. Any input on the current draft data? Let's talk about the current draft of the AGS. Welcome Ms. McGillian. Any input on anything new in the current draft or any board comments that anybody wants to add? Excellent. Sue has been, slowly but surely, we are getting all the piles of data done. We're almost there, right?
Yep.
Am I correct?
Yep.
And so although Act 49 says that we don't have to do any more data than what a merger article had to include, there has been some other comments from the AOE that they want more data, so we're giving them the full on, we're blinding them with data. So we're getting it all done. Yes, Jody?
Does everybody here have access to a copy of what we sent up? It's online?
It's online. The new data that's coming through, I have not updated online, which we should probably start, I should probably make a hard stop early next week and get everything we have and update the copy. The website's been changing over too, so I didn't wanna.
It's nice.
Yes, it is very nice, but I don't, yes, Aaron?
Do we know that the 10 questions that the board is submitting will be the same for each hearing?
I.
We've gotten ours.
We've gotten ours.
It's the same.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the next item of business, that's why I didn't understand the question, because I'm, no worries, no worries at all.
And they are.
They seem to be all the same for everyone. Okay. I have on for us to do an input on the one pager of the summary, but I'm going to maybe put that on to next week. The handout, you all know what I'm talking about, maybe wave it in front of you.
This one, everybody has this one?
I do somewhere.
This one, yep.
Yeah.
But if you could just review that, because it's just a nice thing to have as a one-page handout that just explains the things that we're doing and, I don't know, what's going on in the process, so.
Give some.
I think it went around to everybody.
It never actually officially came to us.
You didn't get it officially?
Has it officially come to you?
No, just somebody passed it to me.
Would you like to have a copy?
No, I haven't now, but it was never officially presented to our board or given to us.
She says, she says she has it, Aaron.
But I don't.
Oh, you don't. Well, there you go.
I don't care. I like people that look out for themselves. So that brings us to preparing for the AOE presentation. And I guess, I'm gonna let David take it away after I say just one or two things that I want us to be really thoughtful as we prepare and think about what's really good about our AGS presentation, that we all remember that nobody got on this board or on this AGS committee to not make things better. And we've done a lot of things to try to make things better for our students in various ways. And so when we're answering these questions from the Secretary or from the Agency of Education, it's, have that in your mind, like what have we done to improve? What have we done to make things better? Because I think that makes for a better presentation, makes for a better frame of mind, because it's, I would like to think that after two and a half years, I could've had another child and have them walking and feeding themselves by now. So I would like to think that we have made, you know, made some, offered some ideas that would be better for our children, better for our schools. So it's a really important thing to have. So with that, I'm gonna let David Scholes take it away.
Okay. The, what we've got for the not-quite-hour left is the, on each of the tables there are the questions. And they're typed up on the top of the sheet and the second, the sheet in the back is the same, I just did the first one with lines and not the second. There's plenty of room to write on. And what we want you to do in groups of two or three is look at the questions that are in front of you and talk for a little bit about what the question means. So you're kind of clear about what it is you're supposed to be responding to. And some of them have a sub-question half the way down or a little further down the sheet that you want to look at as well. The, what we're looking for is ideas, your ideas and responses to the question for how the alternative, the structures that we're talking about, the alternative structure, offer opportunities to make, to deal with that question, to make that situation better, to improve that situation. And the guidelines are positive and non-judgmental. It's, the idea is to get the ideas down, to get your thoughts down. And we'll take a look at it and we'll collate them and then we'll meet again and decide what to type up and send up to the agency and plan the presentation. So when you get done, actually if you wouldn't bring it, I'll be here, just bring it to me and grab another one. And what we're gonna do is try and spend about 10 minutes on each one so that everybody has a chance to look at all of them. There are actually six that are circulating, I think, and a seventh that.
So let's make it seven minutes.
Is that? Seven minutes?
Yeah, I've got two.
Okay.
Maple pie will be left for me.
So we have two on your paper alone?
Yeah, but we're gonna, as a group, we work on one.
So is this group thing?
This is group thing?
Yes.
All right.
How does the proposal support your ability to increase flexibility to manage share and transfer resources to the goal of increasing the district level ratio of student to student whole time, without a staff?
Is there anything missing or?
Sometimes it's easier I being led to.
You don't think sustain is fiscal question?
I think that's exactly it is.
And I guess I was.
It's the fiscal question.
Yes, I think the cost is a fiscal point.
Well, sustain the support.
I wonder if sustain is.
Well, that's a good point, it could be both the school and.
I think sustain the support's a more interesting question. But let's do the, let's try the first one and then it may lead us right into the second.
Containment control.
And we, I guess that could lead into our being controlled, somewhat in control of personnel as well.
It permits analysis, right?
The community is in control.
Of what's working and not working.
The local boards.
Yeah.
It speaks to the idea of sharing personnel with other boards, which goes back to the beginning.
Yeah.
Sound use of funds, I mean, it all just loops back.
So we're thinking that we have.
I'm talking about how, because it is, I mean, if the public has a concern about a teacher or a program or something, they can come to one board with that concern.
To a local board.
Yeah.
I was just watching not in central development, technology, orchestra, library, music and band lessons, and those are the things that they put in for this year.
But we have to show that that key is better.
I wonder if there are more, but those are the things that they mentioned at the meeting, that they had put into the agency to share and work together on them. I know they've got a lot of smaller schools than we do, so nursing services, I think we've all got our own nurses, right?
Yeah, I think you do.
In what ways?
Professional development, I think we already.
Obviously in terms of programs, more flexibility to bring in spots.
Technology, that's.
So we're going to this one?
Yep, I think so.
Okay, so how does the proposal support your ability to provide substantial equity in the quality and variety of educational opportunities in a sustainable manner? And we have to answer that regarding students within the district that are chronically underserved versus not chronically underserved, and the district students versus other districts in the region and the state. So.
Do you have any other ideas about how we can?
I think one, such a big, this is like the medias question of the hall, I think, and the hardest one to answer because we get that equity problem.
Define it, define equity.
You know, equal access to opportunity.
It's good to hear why you're. Right, but within your school district.
Right.
So are you aware of any particular inequity in the Dummerston school district?
So for Dummerston, I would say that when we are num, our chronically underserved population, I don't have data on non-English speakers, because I have probably two of them in the school, so that data doesn't get reported. But for children on free and reduced lunch, our scores are statistically the same for our chronically underserved and our, for FRL population and our non-FRL population.
Ours are not, I don't know where I have that, people have been handing me a lot of paper lately.
Doesn't matter, we've come to know each other and talk.
Ours are not. But I haven't been shown, I mean unless they're saying literally, "Dummerston give us money," I haven't seen any way in which merging will change that, because it seems to be accepted Dummerston, NSU situation.
Well, it's a nationwide situation for forever. It's the big rock to crack in education is how do we support children in poverty so that they can say more potential, such children are not.
Yep.
And that's general, and it's funny, it's generally assessed by scores, although we have wanted to look at high school graduation rates too and see.
Those are very difficult to find, we asked Frank for similar information, or Paul rather, and it was difficult to find.
It's very difficult to find, but going forward, we're going to track that information so that we, because really, Sback scores only tell you one thing. And David and I had a meeting with Lyle and I said, you know, we hang all this on Sback scores, but we have no idea how that translates into actually graduating high school. And there is a lot of data to say that children can graduate from high school, they're gonna be better off. And so can we start tracking that? So the SU is gonna start tracking that. So I mean, right, that we're gonna start tracking high school graduation rates and from the schools they come from and FRL and.
Is that we can, as a board, or as boards, or as NSU, we can do a lot of these things with other supervisory units. We can do our buying, for example, fuel buying and things like that. We can make contracts to be able to do things with Windham North, we could do it with Windham Central. You know, we could all work together on some of these sharing activities just by contract, contractual things.
The quality standards and the reports on the back, so if you need to look them up, they're all set.
What's this one say? How does the proposal support your ability to lead students to achieve or exceed the state's education equality standards in a sustainable manner?
When you close your times up on that.
Regarding students within the district chronologically underserved versus not chronologically, I guess that's what CU means, chronologically underserved. That's one thing I found just from coming to these meetings now, there's all these anachronisms and I don't understand what they are. District students versus other districts in the region and state, so.
Free and reduced lunch ship.
What?
By school and free and reduced lunch.
Well, I did see you.
I did.
I think for one thing, I think we already, it gets difficult when you start talking about chronically underserved students. But on the whole, like when we looked at the numbers, I don't know, we looked at sort of the big time numbers, it seemed like we generally are exceeding the state standards. Even Putney, which I think tends to do a little more poorly on testing than Dummerston, for example.
And you don't emphasize testing on Putney.
Right, but still, in many ways, if you look at it holistically, you look at the entire school, does exceed the state standards. I think the Equity and Opportunity Committee.
What numbers were you guys looking at?
Should we pass on yours?
I don't recall.
The Sbacks?
I think that may have been it, yeah.
The Sbacks, probably.
This was from way back at this point.
Yeah. And I think, I think Brattleboro, you have Academy and Oak Grove that are doing very well. And Green Street, I understand, is really pulling, getting pulled up quite a bit.
I can do that too.
It's anecdotal from parents that it's doing very well.
No, there's Sbacks.
District students versus other districts in the region.
It's not just.
Okay, so I'm glad to hear that then, because I've heard it as anecdotal.
But you have looked at the Sbacks.
Yeah, but it's hard to take it all in. So you're thinking that we already have improvement in that area.
I think we're already exceeding it, we could always do more. And I think there's always the question, how do you do better with particularly the free and reduced lunch?
Yeah.
And so I know what the Putney numbers tend to do as well.
What's going on, and what the other school may not be doing.
I don't know that I have a specific answer to that. I do think that's, in theory, the
whole point of the Equity and Opportunity Committee.
Okay, so Equity and Opportunity.
And certainly where we're all working together, you know, perhaps there's some, there are things that Putney specifically, but other schools too, could learn from other schools what they're doing specifically to address kids who have more needs. And maybe implement some of those things, I don't know for sure, but.
So that's communication with other boards?
Yes.
Academy does a good job too.
I know, one of the things that I have found very interesting is, and I, I'm retired, so I have some time, is watching other board meetings and watching. And Brattleboro did a wonderful presentation to their town meeting, you did a good job. And what the things are needed and what things are good. And Brattleboro has already gotten a lot of support for the underserved.
They haven't had the tech support that.
And I think they're the ones that we really could look at. I know Tuesday night we had the gal from the Supervisory Union in here talking about the STEP program and the, all the WWs and the BBBs and all those programs. It was a very interesting program, it was the same one that they, she presented down in Brattleboro.
What is this one?
This was the gal who's special ed.
On the behavior practice?
Yeah, on the behavior practices with the STEP program and with.
This is your science throughout the Supervisory Union?
This is science?
And so we have a detailed action.
Okay, I'm not sure I've seen science before, but this was 2016, okay.
The Equity and Opportunity Committee.
The thing that's easier is you take a line and you pull down and, I don't know if I can do it on this one, I think I did.
So that's kind of like, we've created an entity that's in charge of this.
This is all sorts of data. This is data that you must have seen.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of that.
Percentage of low-income students and this breaks it out by which school.
Oh, I haven't seen that one.
So this is Academy School is, let's see, that blue. Guilford is, I wish they'd use like really different colors.
Yes, I do.
And then Brattleboro Middle School, Bam is that one. But the numbers are skewed once you get to the high school and the middle school, because they don't fill them. That's Green Street, that's Vernon, then you guys, Dummerston's here, Putney is this one.
Putney's green?
Well, Putney was this.
Oh, that blue, okay, yeah.
That one, I think.
And that's with the, with the free and reduced lunch?
That's the free and reduced lunch. So the highest right now looks to be, or Green Street.
Yeah, I think it would be.
I think we should just do SEPS.
But I think the managing, we can plug them and just say.
Kind of some radical changes.
I just think eventually the OEC is going to be really the linchpin for so much of this change.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Because it's the conduit for conversation from one town to the other.
This is one of the, the detailed actions.
What detailed actions will you take to continue to improve in this goal? What detailed actions will you take?
So like what kinds of, like at the end of an OEC meeting, what would you?
How do we share the information best? How do we get it out?
So if you kind of put it across the.
How do we keep new parents coming into the OEC?
And information flowing in.
Right. So there almost needs to be a communication plan.
Yeah, write down communication.
Report, communication plan.
And then we'll see if we can figure out, or maybe one of the other groups will add something to it. Communication plan and what would it, to.
I don't know if he gave me all of them or not.
Or maybe even quarterly.
Who's this, right?
No.
Quarterly review of actions and initiatives.
Well, maybe the board has seen it, just I haven't.
Because if, what you're saying about sustainability being static, the, what happens a lot is something that's implemented and then it just goes on and on and on and on. And nobody goes back and says, how's this going, should we tweak it a little bit?
Right, or should we get rid of it?
Yeah, yeah.
There's always.
Sort of an ongoing communication, ongoing assessment of effectiveness.
I like the assessment.
And then the maximize efficiencies. I'm trying to find out which of these questions, and there may be another one, has, asks, how are you gonna know how well you're doing? Because one of the problems that we, we had, we tried to figure out, how can we, what numbers do we have to know whether the kids in Putney who are out in the woods on their skis and riding their bikes around while the Brattleboro kids are maybe doing an extra literacy block?
So why don't we have a report card?
Yeah, what kind of report card would, and then how do we know when the kids get to the middle school if they, were the Dummerston kids as well prepared as the Guilford kids?
Wasn't there something about identifying new information that should be tracked by the SU, so we have that?
Yeah.
Identify.
New data points.
Yeah, yeah, good one, that's a great word.
For future.
But Dummerston is not.
No, Oak Grove and.
Of growth and effect. And, yeah, and effectiveness of programs.
Cars are more likely.
Very busy people.
Likely to rise.
OEC.
If a smaller.
Some people are going to be attending three meetings a month.
Governments.
Scoreboard members.
Accountable to.
Then getting on the OEC and then someone will be a rep.
I think from food to homelessness to transancy to try to give stability to kids that are having trauma, our teachers being trained in being able to identify a kid in trauma and knowing how to respond to that.
Would you like to know how long it took the town reps to pass.
To the professional developers that this family has had to do, where they can see that this, this is the same material presented three different ways. The tutoring that we do after school, the breakouts that we do during the school day, the academic support teachers that are in there because of Title I funding. Everything, everything works together and the STEP programs and the behavior programs, the positive behavioral, what does it stand for, positive behavior information integration, someplace, GIS?
That's one of the ones I couldn't.
But it's positive behavior.
Yeah.
Something.
Intervention or.
Intervention.
But that's like, but that's.
So all of those programs and the changes, and then even Head Start and changing it this year to Oak Grove, because the kids that are in Head Start are selected by a federal worksheet. Well, we, we can change it slightly, but you have to prove that you're taking the medias to kids. And so you get points if you have a family member incarcerated, a family member addicted to drugs, somebody with mental health problems. All of those mean you're more likely to go in and get the services. So that means you end up with a, an environment then of everybody being in an extreme need. And there's no balancing, there's no role models, there's no, like this doesn't have to be this way all of your life, there are people doing something else. And so that's one of the reasons we wanted to do a mixed classroom. So we've started the preschool that's in Oak Grove to share so that we can have half that are public school kids and half that are Head Start kids. I mean, they're public school kids too, but it's a mix, they don't have to qualify with that same one.
They used to have the Head Start follow-through program was a mix, because my son was in it in Brattleboro when, before we came here.
Way before me, no.
Yeah, way before you, because Bam's 53 years old, so he was there. And it was a good, because it was a mix of people.
I don't know if it changed because of federal.
Yeah, probably.
Influence or not, but anyway, that's why we've switched.
I also had one fantastic teacher, so that makes a big difference too. Teachers are, teachers are where it's at.
I mean, for this question, it's, it's not a one-answer thing.
What's this one? How does the proposal support your ability to provide substantial equity in the quality and variety of educational opportunities in a sustainable manner regarding students within the district chronically underserved versus chronically, chronically underserved versus not chronically underserved? District students versus other districts in the region and state?
David, why don't you take this one?
I would actually argue about these questions, chronically underserved, I don't know what they're trying to say. I don't think that we have in our Supervisory Union, a bunch of people have been chronically underserved. I think we've had change in demographics in the last 15 years or so.
All right.
And it makes it, makes us change what we're doing.
Delivering at a cost to parents' voters and taxpayers.
Makes sure we're serving, but I don't know that they were chronically underserved for the last, chronic is like 50 years or something. I don't think 50 years ago Vermont looked like what it does now.
It didn't.
But I wasn't here.
No, you're younger than my son, so.
I didn't live drop here though.
No, you grew up in the Midwest. Yes. So you're challenging the term chronically underserved and you're saying that, things change.
Ladies, you're both beautiful.
Demographics.
You're both pretty and you can both be an experienced educator, right?
And that we have to be shift with it, right?
What did I say, too small and a cheese?
Yeah, so, well, that's one of them.
But for both.
I think that's what.
The, one of the things that happens if we do merges.
This is number one.
The averaging of the property tax makes some towns significant wins.
So, yeah.
And some towns, and you guys are, you know, you're in a different world altogether, because you're still getting that income. For the other four towns, two of the towns would make out really well.
Should we put tax in?
Yeah, yeah, that the, and what happens is that.
And probably other people are too, but I know they're really very good figuring out to put things in formulas. So that.
The possible.
If Dummerston doesn't have an issue with.
Should consider choice.
You know, just the fact that we don't leave the Title I on, why should we have the.
Dummerston talked about.
Everybody else believes it should have, that we should not have it. They shouldn't be fighting, we're not gonna be fighting this issue between all of the schools working together to help pull up somebody. And just from these last couple of years, it's really nice to say, but Brattleboro is doing this.
Yeah, Marlboro sends, or allows.
Putney is doing this, you know, these are the things that are helping some of their students. They may not work for Dummerston.
Any place that would take the street average.
Why not try?
Plus, Mr. Sizer has a choice for something they can, they can go to Millers Falls or Bigfoot or some school.
Sustained manner, sustained manner. Oh, trans, uh, sharing resource, agency funds and sharing, sharing teachers as things get smaller, and increased ability to share teachers. Increased ability, because we do it now. Increase...
Did you put the Skype thing in, you put this kind of in a way, did you put the Skype thing in there? In the proposal? I don't even remember. I've read it.
Oh, the Skype class, oh, trying to do Skype classes? Yeah, no, it isn't the proposal.
Oh, okay, okay.
Availability?
Availability, or, it's like, we're making it more efficient or more expeditious to be able...
Increased efficiency?
Yeah, efficiency.
That's a good word.
Or maybe at least, maybe two. I'm still like, small classes and what we were talking about. Adding Skype to that might make it even more interesting. I don't see how children learn a language two days a week.
Right, but if you're Skyping the other days a week, and you have...
Yes.
And you have that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, the policies.
Have you seen five?
No. Not seen five. Oh, my goodness. Somebody liked the five.
You still got one?
Yes.
How does the proposal support your ability to deliver education at a cost that parents, voters, and taxpayers value in a sustained manner? My one answer to that would be that we need to work together more in sharing costs. And I think we need to work with the, I'm not writing them down, I should be, with the outlines.
Students and parents will have a greater, better access to their governing bodies.
That's the key reason.
That's right.
Maintaining, maintaining...
Pinchmarks and assessments.
For high school kids to come in as part of the...
Quarterly or ongoing check-ins or evaluation, self-evaluation.
It says, how does the proposal, number four, right? Support your ability to promote transparency and accountability in a sustained manner? I think the question is, how is this proposal different than what's going on? That would make it...
That'll also be what the engagement is.
But it's an engagement process that will enable our towns to support each other.
Understand, and they're also easier to analyze. Rotation of the meetings through the various participating communities, the public is likely to attend and participate. Ideas to...
I hope. I'm sad we're reporting...
So I'm going to type all these in and come up with some concise language, send it around with the minutes. Hopefully, I can get it done very quickly so we can look at this. So I'd love to go over this next week before we get to meet with the Agency of Education and decide who's going to do the presenting.
Who's meeting next week? I thought it was just Dummerston Board. Are you?
No, we don't, the board doesn't meet next week.
No, with the Agency of Education?
Vernon and Dummerston are joining together now.
And other people may join next week.
We decided that this week. I didn't know on Monday. It wasn't until Monday night that Vernon said, yes, we'd like to go with you, since we're both presenting the, the exact same thing. It didn't make sense to, and we can put our little slant on it, but it made more sense from an efficiency standpoint, an operational efficiency standpoint that we present together. So we decided to do that.
I'm sure whoever it is that's sitting in for Rebecca will come.
So six o'clock, so six o'clock Thursday, where? Do we want to do Brattleboro? Can you, can we get a Brattleboro school or...
I can check, yeah, probably.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get back to you on Green Street, so lovely, because it's pretty accessible to most.
Thursday the fifth, right?
Six o'clock, Green Street.
And we'll, we'll get back to you on location. Thank you all, and it makes me so look forward to meeting with whatever secretary was there. I would entertain a motion for Christina to go have her maple time. Thank you, David.
Second.
Name is...
David and Ann.
Goodbye, say aye!
Aye.